Let's call this meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with number ten, Justice Earl.
Roll call, Mr. Brennan.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
Councilmember Brian Erdy Alice.
Here.
Doug Shawson.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
He has an excused absence for a personnel matter.
Lynn Deal.
Present.
Kevin Lindell.
I'm not there, but I'm here.
You were right on time, too. All right. The first item on our agenda tonight is going to be a good one. Presentation and possible action on a resolution appointing Steve Glamier as our city manager and approving an employment agreement in connection therewith. So, as you have probably aware, council went out for applications for filling the city manager position. To our delight, we had an internal candidate. We finalized it down to two potential finalists. And after sitting down and having a discussion with Mr. Glamier, it was decided that he was probably our best candidate and would save time, money, and efforts to go with a in-house sure thing. So, we have a resolution tonight that will be effective today and have Mr. Glamier stepping into that position. So, and we have a agreement, employment agreement as well for him. I think we've all reviewed them and if Steve accepts them, I imagine that... So, if anybody has any questions regarding those, should I read the resolution?
You don't need to read the resolution.
Okay. That'll save time. With that, if there are no questions regarding this, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to appoint Steve Glamier as our new city manager for Fort Morgan and to move forward on approving the employment agreement.
Second. I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call. Kevin?
That resolution carries on a unanimous vote of six to zero with Councilmember Anderson absent.
Speech?
Steve, it's a pleasure to...
Well, I think I'll stand here and give Brent an opportunity to, I guess, you know... Well, I got lots of the good things to say, I hope, but I just want to start by thanking the council. You guys have entrusted me with an incredible responsibility and that's not lost on me. I gave this a tremendous amount of thought when the opening came open and the application was out. Initially, I wasn't sure, but I started to receive phone calls and emails and text messages and personal visits from folks, employees, staff, people from Delta. You all know that Delta was looking for a city manager at the same time and I was getting lobbied a bit, if you will, to consider Delta's as a possible city manager position. I had folks around the state that just reached out and said, "You need to be a city manager, whether it's in Delta or whether it's in Fort Morgan." Well, our home is here. And so, if I was going to do this, it was going to be here. So, I talked to my wife and we talked at length and prayed a lot about it and made that decision right before the applications were due. You know, I'm a pretty humble guy and it's hard for me to think that I'd be that guy. I'm just a simple pig farmer. That's how I grew up. You know, government's my life. We talked a lot about this during the interview. I've been doing this now, going on 27 years of local government. I've had less than a handful of jobs and most, obviously, the longest-tenured ones been in local government. This is what I do. That's what I love to do. It's what I'm passionate about. It's what gets me out of bed other than my wife every morning, right? I love to serve and I love to serve our citizens. So, thank you for entrusting me with the responsibility that comes with this. I'm ready to start. I've been ready for a while. Yeah, I want to thank our staff. We've got the most incredible staff any city could ever want. They are top-notch and it's been tough for the last six months. And they've all stepped up to the plate, but specifically, I need to just give some accolades to Brent. You know, I've been an interim city manager. I did it twice in Delta. It is the toughest job I've ever had and I know what Brent had to do. It's, you know, you're carrying a stack of plates that are teetering back and forth and you're trying to move them from one place to the next. That's hard enough to do and then when somebody throws the COVID-19 platter on the top, I'm just amazed he didn't drop any and he didn't. And he's just been exceptional as an interim leader. So, Brent, thank you so much for the leadership that you've done, yeah. And you know, he doesn't do that but for all the rest of the staff as well, right? And so, our, all of our staff, we've got many of them here in the room tonight presenting budgets, you know, and our leadership team, the directors and the managers, I couldn't ask for a greater group of people to work alongside. And I wouldn't do it if I didn't have their support and I believe I do. And I'm excited to get to work with all of those folks as your leader here. I want to thank the citizens and the business owners also for entrusting me in this. I've heard from several of them as well and I'm pretty excited about that, that I've got support. I would just say to our citizens and to anyone, my door is open to you and I want to hear what's on your heart. We may not always be able to do what you want or agree every time, but I promise you I will give you my ear, both of them, and listen to you and speak less because that's, I think, how we get things done is to make sure we understand and we listen and then we can act upon what we hear. So, I'm here, my door's open to any citizen, any business owner, any staff member, and of course, you all. I want to hear from you all. I want to know where you're at and how I can help. How can I be a part of the solution and not a part of the problem? And then finally, I have to thank my wife. She deals with me every day and has to listen to me nash my teeth in the middle of the night when I'm thinking about things or bang my head against the wall when I can't, you know, get past a stumbling block that I've got. But she's my rock, she's my supporter. She's here tonight and I'm just grateful that she's willing to go on this roller coaster ride some more. And it's been a fun ride. This is another chapter in a book I think I ought to write about local government. All the stories we could tell, right? But I'm excited and I truly do thank you all very much for allowing me to take this step. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
I've already changed the nameplate.
I would like to personally thank you, Brent, also. You stepped up and dove headfirst into a really tough time that we weren't expecting and knew was on the horizon. And I think you've represented the city staff and done the job that we asked you to do and you did it admirably and to the best of your abilities. And with that, I thank you very much for the...
I appreciate that.
Work that you did.
It's been an interesting 173 days, if you're counting. But it was a fun challenge. I was glad I was able to step up and do it. Like Steve says, we've got an amazing staff that works here at the city. Part of the reason that it was able for me to do that was my superintendents that work underneath me are an extraordinary group of people. And we've got two of them in here tonight, Tony and Doug. The rest of them will be in with the next budget meeting. And they were able to basically step up and do what they needed to do without me being there a lot. And so, I could focus a lot of times. On the other side of the equation, I always talk about living in the utility world and now I've lived in the general fund world and had my eyes open to that. And I'm glad I was able to help a little bit with that and learn about that at the same time. And so, I was very excited to find out that Steve wanted to put his hat in this race and I'm now very excited that he'll be taking over. And so, with that, I appreciate everything that everybody's done for me while this was going on and I will now move back out in the audience and talk to you here in a few minutes about spending money next year, so... But thank you.
Thanks, Brent.
We wish we had a crown you could transfer.
Okay, you are seated permanently, Mr. Glamier.
Yep. Glue them to the chair.
Permanently. Till death do us part.
Okay. Next on our agenda is a presentation on the acceptance of the 2019 financial audit. Ms. Kenny.
No offense to my new boss.
Thank you.
Okay, you have before you the audit that the auditors actually brought this morning. They finished the audit and as far as the audit that you've already seen, which was, did not include the single audit, everything is pretty much as we had discussed and as it was. The one thing that I need to point out to you is that we did have a, on the single audit, which if you look at, let's see, I hate not being able to lick your fingers. Okay, if you look at page 98, it talks about some findings that they had with regard to the single audit. And what a single audit is, is when there's more than $750,000 worth of expenses, we, the auditors, not expenses, but federal money that we've received, the auditors have to do a special single audit. And so, this year, we had like 758,000. We were not expecting there to be a single audit, but some payments that were made at the very end of the year put it over. And so, they came and did the single audit and they did find, actually, that there was not a good segregation of duties. If you look at page 98, when they talk about condition, they say that there was not a good segregation of duties with regard to submitting or required reporting. And so, what that had to do with was when the bills were submitted, they were just electronically submitted without like a copy being made and it being initialed off by finance. This is something we've struggled with for our grants. People know how to do their grants and they know it so well and they just go ahead and do the way they've, you know, and send them in. And we have struggled with getting people to give them to finance before. And oftentimes, we find the money deposited in the account before we knew that the grant had been submitted. And so, we do need work on this. This is something that they found and we do have plans to change things. If you look at the bottom of page 98, that's my, the views of responsible officials. I guess I'm responsible. The submission process for federal grants is handled electronically. This is likely why the approval process is not clear-cut. Our Public Works Director would electronically send the request into FAA and CDOT. If there were any issues, they would send them back. Corrections were made and it was resubmitted. And that is probably why there aren't, they didn't find any errors in any of the numbers that we did. It was just the process and the procedure. And then on the next page, we revised our process so that the submissions will be printed out before sent and reviewed and signed off on by our General Accounting Manager or Treasurer. This approved document will be saved in our document management and the submitter will go back in and send them in a separate step for payment. Payment requests will not be submitted without proper authorization. And we plan to come up with a policy, Chris has already copied Breckenridge's, and we're going to come up with a policy that we use to make sure that this is carried out, not just for, you know, Public Works, but for all of our departments. When they send something in, like the police department, they need to get us to sign off on it. And the police department does that quite frequently, but not if the form doesn't say finance person. And so, we need to do that upfront. We know the money's coming and we get it here. And so, it was something that, you know, probably needed to be said and so, you know, not really that concerned about it. I know it's something that we can change very easily and we will not repeat having a deficiency next year, so... So, any questions about the audit or anything?
So, everything else that was in here is similar to what we got in our draft?
It is. If you look at page 62, you're going to see that 4.5 million, or is it, no, 64. Let me see. If you look at page 64, you're going to see that 4.5 million dollars that we changed the amount budgeted. And so, there wasn't a budget violation that way. And you can see on the next page, the 4.5 million transferring in. So, that's really the only thing that they changed of any substance. Everything else was just finding, you know, minor errors that they had in verbiage and that sort of thing. So, yeah, but it did take until this morning to get this audit. That's three weeks late.
Okay, so reviewing the draft one is going to be the same as what I've...
You're going to be able to match these up, except for that little section at the back that represents a single audit. Okay?
Very good.
Awesome work, finance team.
Thank you.
I mean, the fun department.
Does anybody have any questions for Jeannie or Chris?
Yeah, nothing additional from last time, so just lots of gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we kind of like the food from El Hacal, too. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll keep sending you food.
I would entertain a resolution accepting the 2019 audit.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the 2019 audit.
Second. I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Doug Sashow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider an application for a special use permit for the second-floor apartment of 304 Main Street as required in the Central Business Zoning Overlay District for residential use. This is a public hearing. Please keep public comments to the issues before council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment time to three minutes unless the speaker represents a group of citizens in which even additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations as I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony and questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, or not pertinent to the issues and to set a limit on the duration of testimony if I determine it necessary in the light of the number of persons who have signed up to testify. First is the legal notice. Mr. Brennan, was this properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, a legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on June 17th.
Next is presentation of the application. City Manager Glamier.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Pulling a little double duty for a little bit here, but yeah, this is a public hearing for a special use permit for a residential apartment in the Central Business Zoning Overlay District. This located at 304 Main Street. The owner applicant, they are here tonight, is out on the town property. Donnie Edson representing those folks. This is required because of the zoning overlay district. You all are familiar with that. We went through the process to review residential units in the downtown corridor. This certainly meets all of the criteria that was outlined through those meetings. It's a second-floor, two-bedroom, a single-family apartment above 304 Main Street. It'll have access off the alley and there is parking right off of the alley in the back. That was one of the concerns that came before planning commission. They were able to address that. We did take this to the planning commission on June 22nd and after hearing from the applicant and discussing the parking a little, they did unanimously approve moving this to your approval tonight. I've articulated the criteria for approval in your memo. We've received only one request about the application and it was really more about, could we just see what's going on? So, we sent this individual a copy of the application supporting documents, never did receive any comments for or against on the application. I think this is ripe and ready for your approval tonight. City staff recommends approval of this case. This is case 20-011 SU, a special use permit for a second-floor residential unit, subject to the following, that the special use would run in perpetuity with the land until such time as the use has been abandoned for a period of more than six months. That's standard language in our code. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have of me.
Yeah, my only question tonight was just about what in perpetuity meant for that specific use, so since this is a new one, this is our first special use for the overlay district, so...
Yeah, it's because it's a residential use. We typically don't see special uses for residential uses. So, once you turn it into a residential use, you wouldn't want it to sell and then them not be able to use it as a residential use just because the property is sold. So, we want it to be in perpetuity until they stop using it for more than six months.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Glamier? I think it was put together, it'd be a great use of property downtown that needs to come back to life, so I think it's much needed and glad to see it. Any other questions? We hear from the applicant. Do you wish to address council?
Thank you for considering this. This is obviously the first one, so we all got to go through it together to understand it all. Hopefully, we get to do many more of these downtown. Our family's been investing money on Main Street for a little bit over two years now. We own six buildings down there and our hope is to turn Main Street into a very thriving area of town that's fun to be at with both businesses and residential that kind of coincide with each other and make it a place where people want to come to often. And we are investing a lot of money down there right now, so thank you for considering this. Happy to answer any questions, too.
I looked at the floor plan. It's going to be small, kind of opened up, nice little unit, looks like.
Yeah, it'd be great and have some nice windows, some nice views right above Main Street there, too, and it'd be nice.
Would you mind signing in so that Mr. Brennan have a record of that for the public hearing? Any other questions or...
I had a question and I do like the idea. It's how Main Street started. It was homes over and apartments over businesses, so it's nice to use those spaces again. I, that's what I was wondering. I like this design. So, you come, is the main door in the back of the alley?
It is, yeah.
And then those windows are over, are, will be, are you going to open that, change the front of that so they can see out the window?
Yep, we will. We're going to make the front so that on the top, there'll be two windows there and then actually an area in between them still for the sign for the business below it, too, so...
That's great, because that's an old '70s front that's outdated.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's part of the plan, so... Which will actually then, when we redo that, we'll redo the front of 306 Main Street as well. We own both those buildings together and they have the same front on them, so...
Great. It'd be great to see some activity down there and nice.
We're working on it.
Yeah, I like it.
Takes time and money.
Yes, it does.
Thanks for believing in Main Street.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Edson?
None for me, Your Honor.
None for me. Thanks.
Public comment, is there anybody wishes to speak on this from the public? Still one wishes to speak. I asked the city clerk, have you received any oral or written comments prior to this hearing?
Not through my office, Your Honor.
Comments from council? Comments from council?
Just, yeah, excitement for this kind of, even though it's not innovative for other areas that have historic downtowns, it's innovative. I guess it's cool retro because we had it originally. So, I think that, yeah, your families have done a really exceptional job being leaders in Main Street downtown, so, yeah, I just wanted to say we're excited to see, yeah, some of those second-level residential properties become a reality, so...
I would say I appreciate the fact, taking such a huge interest in downtown area. I think it's really an integral part of our community and it's kind of nice. So, we've tried to streamline the overlay process for people to help in ease the process of doing it and I hope that worked well for you this time and so... There are no other comments? Kevin, do you have anything?
No, I'm good. Just happy to see that we're continuing to have things happen in downtown.
There you go.
I might add that those buildings, we have listed they're local landmarks and hopefully soon we'll be working on getting access for you or grants for those storefronts from pictures, so we'll keep in touch with you on that. So, that'll be great, too.
Okay, if there's no other comments from council, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Doug Sashow, a second by Lynn Deal. I have a motion by Doug Sashow, a second by Lynn Deal. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. The hearing is closed. Council action, Mr. Wilson.
Mayor and council, you've heard presentation of the application for this special use permit. Appropriate action is by resolution, approving the permit.
I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd like to offer resolution to accept the application for special use permit for the second-floor residential use in the Main Street Overlay District at 304 Main.
I have a resolution by Doug Sashow, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
Hold on, we got to add the perpetuity thing, add that.
That the special use would be run, there you go, with the land until such time as the use has been abandoned for a period of more than six months.
Okay. I have a motion by Doug Sashow, a second by Kevin Lindell with the amendment. All in favor? Or, no, this is a roll call? I was looking at Kevin.
Resolution carries unanimously.
All right, thank you all very much. I just want to thank the applicants. They were great to work with on this application being the first one, so really appreciate you guys. Good luck on your project.
Good luck.
Next is a presentation on bids for the Twainmore Trails Project construction. Mr. Hammer.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. So what we've got tonight is we're looking for approval for the construction aspect of our trail project. We went out to bid on June 2nd, received three bids on June 25th. This portion of the project will build the multipurpose trail, the ingress egress off of 52, a dirt parking lot, ADA parking, a little bit of fencing for decorative purposes as well as some safety reasons on overlooks to the river. We'll do about five miles, excuse me, five miles of trails on this project. I'll be back a couple of times over the summer for other aspects of this overall project, including benches and signage, shelter, things like that, but this is our first step. We had three bids, one from Heartland Reliant for $601,241, Jess Backo at $497,371, and Darren Nebb Escavating at $272,320. We would ask council tonight to approve Darren Nebb Escavating and their bid for an amount not to exceed $300,000. This will give us a little bit of contingency for the construction if we run into any trouble areas when we're scraping and building the trails. That's really about it. Any questions?
Do we have the money budgeted in capital improvement for the additional $74,000?
Yes, so we have our overall grant budget is 328, I think, 330,000. We've got 225 coming in a grant and another 98,000 match, and then we actually budgeted even more than the 98 in Conservation Trust this year. So if I run into trouble and end up a little bit over my initial grant budget, I've got a little bit of extra there, about $75,000, that I can cover some of the extra things. Should be good.
So how many phases is this going to be?
I'm hoping to get it all done this year.
So it's going to be one phase, and then we're done?
Should be, yes.
Okay.
I'll be back.
For the first phase of this?
Well, I guess what I meant is this is the first time you'll see me, but I'll be back again with bids for shelters as well as for a bathroom.
Okay.
So you'll probably see me again on a couple other aspects of this project, but we have two years on the grant to get it done, and I actually am hoping we'll have it done this year by spring, probably.
Do you have a map of what the trails are going to look like?
Uh huh.
Brian, we've got a whole Trails Master Plan that we developed two years ago.
When I first moved into this role, it finished, so it was going on in 2017, I think finished in 18.
So, yeah, it's a really cool document, and you'll geek out over it because, yeah, it's got lots of different phases, not just Riverside and Twainmore Farms, but some inside of city limits as well.
Where can we find this map?
Right.
I can send you a PDF of what we're doing.
Yeah, I'd like that, too.
We tweaked the original map from the Trail Master Plan. Derek Mills, our assistant engineer, helped a lot to draw out the map of what we think the trail will be. He also helped a lot with construction documents as far as how we're going to build the trail or the roads. So big thank you to Derek for all that, because I wouldn't have been able to do that. We are approaching this from a much more natural setting standpoint than what was in the Master Plan. I think I talked to you guys about that when I applied for the grant. So this is going to be very natural, it's going to have some interpretive signage. I'm going to get rid of this. Talking about, you know, the floods and the wildlife down there. Had a great turnout for the pre-bid meeting. I think I had like 17 companies come out, and we saw owls that day, which was a first. I had seen eagles, deer, turkey, all the others, but we saw two huge owls this last time, so it should be pretty cool.
Does that include the bridge? Do you go across?
There is no bridge at this point.
I mean, across the Rainbow Bridge?
It would, yeah, so.
Okay.
The trailhead will be just past the Rainbow Bridge, just north of the Rainbow Bridge.
The parking is going to be on the north side of Rainbow Bridge?
Yeah, you'll go, if you're in a car, you'll go, I don't know, what, 500 yards past the bridge, there'll be a little driveway, goes back into the trees, and there'll be a parking lot back in the trees.
There's currently an old farm access right there, and we'll improve that access off of 52 that'll get you down into a gravel parking lot, and then you'll be able to access the trail starting there, or you can make your way from Riverside Park across Rainbow Bridge and then down into there. There's a way to walk.
There's actually a walking trailhead right there just past the bridge already.
And we'll send maps out to all of you so that you can see what we're planning on doing there, so.
And I'd love the map to, just some blasts online, because I think that'll get a lot of people really excited.
Yeah, you know, hopefully we'll take pictures throughout the whole progress and try to create a little campaign and get some excitement going on.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Hammer?
None more for me, Your Honor.
Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I have a resolution to accept the bid from Darren Nebb Escavating for the Twainmore Farms Trail Project, not to exceed $300,000.
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Brian Erdy Alice. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thanks, sir.
Next is presentation, authorizing city staff to expend allocated CARES Act funding on COVID-19-related expenses to reimburse, to be reimbursed after the spending.
So if you think I'm picky, you should see my daughters, they're like psycho over COVID. I just wanted to have this resolution so that we would have permission to make expenditures related to COVID-19, the reimbursement that we're getting from the county, which is 601, 671,531. We're getting that much money, and we want to be able to make expenditures as they come about rather than coming each time for every single thing. The main things that we're going to be spending things on are reimbursing the city for what we've already spent and what we expect to spend that is clearly COVID-related. We're also going to provide help for small businesses in town, and we're also going to try to set up a plan to reimburse or help people out with their utility bills. There is a way that you can do that and be reimbursed for utility, and they're paying us, so that's kind of a no-brainer. So we're going to try to get that set up, and mostly it's the number two on here that you need to look at, and it's just authorizing us to spend the money in advance of the receipt of the reimbursement from the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. And I also wanted Sarah to come up and talk to you because she's done a lot of work with others in the county, coming up with a plan for the small business, which will be one of the programs that we want to do. And she had done one earlier, and this one is going to be even bigger and better, so.
Hi, good evening. So I'll go over briefly what we're coming up with in terms of the plan for the business grant, the second go-around. This one's going to be a little bit different than the first one we did, just because the funds are coming from the federal government and through the CARES Act, so we want to be very specific, and we also want to reevaluate what we did with the first one and how can we ensure that the second grant that we do meets the current needs of our businesses. So what we've come up with is going to be a grant that has different categories, five to six different categories businesses will be able to apply for any of the categories that they would like. They're not limited to just one. Some of the categories include reimbursing them for any of their PPE purchases that they've had to make, any modifications they've had to make to the interior or exterior of their building in order to reopen safely, and we also want to help them in terms of future expenses that may come up. So the way the CARES Act's worked is that we can reimburse them up until this year, so they have up until December 1st to come to us in terms of any expenses that may come up that are COVID-related. So we're hoping that this is not only funds that can assist them currently right now in providing them working capital, but also for future expenses. This grant program that we're coming up with would be something that not only the City of Fort Morgan would be doing, but also the City of Brush and Morgan County, and so every jurisdiction would be able to provide these funds for their businesses, which is really exciting. If you have any other questions, I can certainly, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have one. We do the expenses, and then it goes through DOLA to get the funds. For the grant side of this, are you, how are you looking to work that? Are we expending funds out of city coffers initially and then trying to get it reimbursed? Or are you going to submit them to DOLA under the city for the business and then disperse them once we get the funds from DOLA?
So I'll go over my process for the grant, and then I'll let Jeannie speak to the reimbursement process with DOLA. But the way the city grant would work in terms of the businesses would be that if they're looking for reimbursement of expenses that have come up since March 1st when COVID hit, they would have to submit receipts to us, we would pay them out, and then I would give that to Jeannie to then request as a reimbursement from DOLA. For businesses that have future expenses, I would earmark it for them, so let's say they have $1,000 of expenses for PPE that they plan to purchase within the next two months, I would earmark that for them, sort of what we do with our existing grants right now that we offer, and then I would submit that to Jeannie once they gave me their receipts. So at that time, it would be on Jeannie to then submit it to DOLA to get the reimbursement.
Is there a limit on how much they can apply for?
No, right now, we haven't set a dollar amount, just because we want to be very fluid with the funds to make sure that not only are we meeting the needs of the businesses in our community, but also whatever needs we have internally and expenses that we've had in terms of COVID-19.
Spending $671,000 on, with what the city's going to incur is going to be a pretty tough shot. I mean, we can do a lot of things, but if they have to be COVID-related, and what I've read on there, we meet some of it, the Zoom portions of it, the grant that we did prior, those types of things, and I believe we can also do the upgrades to senior, old senior center, since we have to expand that to meet social distancing and kind of make it more conducive to conducting business, so are there any other major aspects that you're looking at, we may have expenditures of that?
As far as the business one, the categories are all related to expenses that businesses have had to incur or losses that they've incurred because of COVID-19, but I'll let Jeannie speak to the other types of funds, or the other type of ways they'll be using the funds for the CARES Act. If you don't have any more questions from me in terms of the business.
I just have a quick one.
Go ahead, Allison.
So first, thank you so much for working really collaboratively with the county and with the City of Brush. My question is just specific around if you guys have already talked through this, or if you can tell me kind of your plans about building an application system that is really inclusive, especially for minority business owners.
Definitely, so I'll just briefly go over that. I have met with Brush and the county to make sure that not only are we creating a grant that's able to assist the businesses, but that's also accessible to all the different types of businesses that we have. So we'll be running a pretty strong marketing campaign that will be both on the radio stations in English and Spanish, and then we also plan to translate those applications so that it's available to our whole business community.
As far as the things the city is going to spend, we already have given some help to small business, that's all reimbursable. So that's like 58,6, no, 68,6 that we've already spent. The other, it brings it almost to $100,000, the other things that we've had to do because of COVID, but we do have some ideas, and we're all brainstorming to come up with things that we could do that would be, you know, COVID-related. One of them is like we have some relocation of offices that's going on, and that's partly because of the community not being able to come in safely and to be served at a desk, and so we, you know, we have that happening, that's about 15 grand, and what we're doing is we're just trying to come up with things that will help the community and help us to get through the COVID crisis. I mean, there's things, PPE, that is, it's hard for us to give a dollar amount because we're constantly buying more stuff. Doug Hoff McKenna's tested that. We're constantly wanting more things, and so we're having to purchase things. I know it seems like a lot of money. I also know that if we don't spend all the money, we give it back to the state, and, you know, that's not the worst thing that can happen, but we'd sure like to use it for the purpose it was intended to, for the people of Fort Morgan. So that's what we're, that's what we're going to head for.
That's great.
Okay.
Anything else? You guys good?
So we need a resolution.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer resolution authorizing city staff to expend allocated CARE Act funds on the COVID-19-related expenses to be reimbursed after spending.
Who was that?
Second?
I have a resolution by Doug Sashow, a second by Brian Erdy Alice. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is the 2021 Budget Calendar. Mr. Nation, Ms. Kenny, Mr. Linton, Mr. Glamire, Ms. Ormsby, Mr. Hoffman, Mr. Schontz, Mr. McCoy, Mr. Behrens, Mr. Evans.
All right, Your Honor, this is the first and many of budget presentations you will begin to see, so.
Bring it on.
Right? This is very exciting times. I told you guys in my interview that I love the way we budget here. It starts the process early and allows everybody an opportunity to see each and every line item and ask their questions, and that way, by the time you get to the end and the budget document's prepared, we're ready for adoption at that point, so. You've got several before you tonight. This is really the electric fund, gas fund, sanitation fund, but lots of folks in those funds, so maybe we can start with Brent and go down the list here, so. Yeah, I guess Doug.
Let Doug go. That way you discuss it.
Yeah.
You can let Doug go first and then request he stay to the end of the meeting.
Yeah, we can deny all his requests and get on to the real requests here.
Works for me. I can go by through this budget line by line, or I can just touch my changes in my capital, if that's the way you want to go. That's the way you choose. Okay. So pretty much I have three increases in my budget, maintenance of equipment, and that's basically because the price of doing business is going up. Number two is the uniforms, same thing. Prices keep increasing on my PPE, so I can't. Prices keep increasing on my PPE, so I can't get it here fast enough and it's expensive. So, that's an increase. And then overhead street lighting, I went from 50 to 70, just to kind of push that project on a little faster. Hoffman's getting tired of ordering lights for me, so I thought I could do more next year.
Are you switching to the LEDs for the street lighting?
We are. We've ran into a little problem this year. They changed the light head that we like, so now we got to find a new light head. And with the change, of course, it costs more money and we're trying to keep the cost down. So, if we can get them at a better price, we'll buy more. So, that's why I increased it 20 grand. And let's see, I have one more in engineering and consulting. We've got some projects probably look, that we're going, big projects next year we're looking at for engineering. One of those is going to be, I'm going to start looking at replacing substation transformers. So, I'll take a year to do the engineering and then the next year, we'll, we'll replace a substation transformer. So, do the engineering first and then the replacement the following year. And then some bigger projects coming down the road. In my capital, I'd like to replace a 1998 Altech digger truck. I got that budgeted at 190,000. Hopefully, that's enough. I put in the 2019 budget, a pickup with a dump bed. Was unsuccessful getting that because Ford quit making fuel tanks, so I didn't get a truck. And I didn't go after it this year because we had other things to do. I'm glad we didn't. Then I'm going to rebuild, a line rebuild out of the West Sub, or West Thai Line, which is, it heads west, comes down 17 and heads out of town and comes back into town a little bit thereby. Smirks, I'm going to put new poles in there and increase the wire size so we have more capacity in that line headed that way. And then, we've been talking about this for years, Christmas lights. I remember them, them Christmas lights were hanging now, probably were bought in 91 or 92, or maybe 93, not sure, long time ago.
92, I was at the electric department when we got them.
I can tell you, Delta has the exact same Christmas lights, so there must have been sale on them. I think everybody bought them at the same time, so.
Well, we're running out of lipstick. We can't fix it anymore.
Yeah, that was our problem in Delta, too.
We looked at, we put $100,000, they're, they're quite expensive to buy, so I don't know how far 100,000 is going to get us. But we'll look at it and this year, or next year, we'll have a better idea as the cost to replace numerous lights on Platte Avenue. And I think we'll just go Platte Avenue and then we have North Main covered and Main, Main Street covered. So, but that, that's pretty much my budget for 2021. So, I'll answer any questions.
Just because I'm curious and I don't have last budget capital, is it similar to last year's?
Capital?
Yeah, pretty close. I had a line rebuild in there last, or I didn't have, I don't have a line rebuild in there this year. But yeah, it's about status quo, really, on my feeder lines.
Are you redoing the line all the way to the substation, the underground and everything?
No, we, we've done that already. We've done that a couple of years ago, now it's time to take care of the overhead.
Overhead.
Small poles.
Are you trading in the digger truck?
We, we could try to trade in the digger truck nowadays, they, it ain't worth them, worth driving it back to Denver, but for them guys, I mean, they, they hardly give you nothing. So, I was thinking maybe a, a department here in town or in the city could utilize it. Skippy would be a good example. He likes to pull that pump up and down all the time. And that'd be utilized for that. And then Al does maintenance once a year on his well out there, he pulls them up and...
Let Al use it first.
Yeah, we don't want any cross contamination, one or the other. They can fight over it if they want to use it.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Hopefully, I have an answer.
Do you think, I'm envious of all the underground lines over in the new area that looks so beautiful. Is there any, is it way too expensive to ever think about doing it in the old part of town where I live?
It is quite expensive and it's not so much put in our wire, our wires underground, it's all the services that we have going to houses.
Probably.
So, that would be quite expensive.
I'm sure.
But it can be done, like I tell Brent, anything can be done, it just costs money.
Yeah, maybe we'll win the lottery in the city.
Everything I have is for sale if you want to pay my price.
That too.
Okay, any other questions for Doug?
Doug, I think you already were talking about PPE. Which line was that again?
It was down there, close to the bottom, 3330, uniforms, so 1, 2, 3, 4 from the bottom on the first.
Perfect. Is 2K enough?
We added a little bit last year.
Okay.
And I can see us running out this year, so we'll, we'll start small and we'll see.
Yeah, it's super important, so I want to make sure you have what you need in that line.
Yeah, I think, we'll, we'll start there. I think we'll, we'll see where we end up there.
Okay.
How close we get to that next year. And then, we talk about fiber. We've been talking about fiber. We don't have a line item in my budget, so Brent and I discussed this and would like to, where'd he go? He bagged me. We'd like to add a line item that we didn't get in here in time, we were still discussing it, so. We'd like to add that. And Brent said about 300,000. No, he just said about 30, 25 to 30,000. And this, this will help. We'll take Center Point, for example, we're running fiber conduit with our primary conduit, so we can start the fiber, the city network and our network in that area.
So, you're still putting conduit, fiber conduit in with all your underground stuff?
Yep. This, this time, we're going to use it. We used a lot when we put the backbone in, we used a lot of it when we put the fiber to the house in, so this is additional. So, everything new built underground will have a conduit, a fiber conduit in the vicinity.
So, this is mainly for fiber construction?
Yep, that's all this for, for material and, material.
So, where's the decimal point, Brent?
I think you're going to have to shuffle it over a little bit.
How many zeros?
Four zeros or five?
Let's just go there. We'll start with 30 grand and see where it gets us.
Okay.
If that's doable. 300 sounded better, though. Any other questions for Doug? I always like to have money in my budget.
Contingencies, Doc.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Let you know what you get.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, next on the list, I think, is me. I'm going to do a couple tonight. Sam wasn't able to be here, so I've also got building maintenance. We can cover that after I'm done with this one, or we can wait until we get on the list. But the engineering public works budget is unchanged from last year, other than we did remove the data processing line item. We just never used it, so I didn't see the need to carry the money on every year. It's been zero balance for many years and they kept budgeting $600 and just no real need to use it. So, you see the items listed there. Like I say, it's, it's pretty much, well, it's exactly the same as, as last year for each of those line items, so.
I see you don't have an employee recognition line item?
Yeah, that's a good question. There was never one in this budget, so, you know, when I inherited this budget in 2017, it didn't exist. There is one in the building department budget, and you'll see that here in a few weeks. But, so we use that when, you know, if there's a recognition that we want to do. For instance, we had a couple of staff recently complete some certifications, and so we, we were able to just take them to lunch and celebrate them that way. So, pretty much, when we say public works engineering, it's, it's me and Derek and the building department and Brenda, Andrea. That's, that's really the entire department. So, we pretty much use the one out of the building department for that.
Okay.
Any other questions on this one?
Nope, pretty straightforward.
Pretty boring one, Steve.
Yeah, sorry. I could tackle Sam's the same way out of building maintenance. There's no changes in that one either.
Sam doesn't have employee recognition either.
Pardon me?
You have to find us a new engineer as good as you are.
I have to find you a new engineer as good as me? Ty says that won't be too hard, so I'll do what I can. I promise.
Ty, it's the second time I've heard that story, so I don't think you're going to live it down.
I can, for sure.
Steve, one question on Sam's.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of change, but will the fieldhouse be done in 2021? Like, will that have any effect on Sam's budget?
Yeah, I don't, it won't on Sam's budget, but we are talking about how we handle building maintenance for that building out of the fieldhouse budget. So, when we get into the, the fieldhouse, I think you're going to see some needs there for additional employee or something. It's just way too big of a building, clearly, to operate the way we've been operating. And I don't want to take any thunder away from Ty and his team, but I know they're working hard on that to figure out, you know, how do we maintain that? Fortunately, it'll be a brand-new building a few months into the year, so we're hoping there's, there's little to no maintenance. There's still a 12-month warranty on a lot of the items in the building, so we'll see, you know, contractors helping with anything major, but small items certainly, I, I think there would be an opportunity for, for some help there for, and then for sure, after that warranty period going forward, I think we're going to have to do something additional. It's a good question. Any other questions on Sam's budget? Pretty boring again. All right, well, I think we can move on to finance then. I think we've got utility billing next. So, Jeannie's handling that one.
Okay, Kendra prepared the utility billing and actually, I went over, we decided just about everything should remain the same. The one thing that we did change, I'm actually going to change again tonight, and that was the UB collection expense. All that is usually in there is bills from Lexis, Lexis, Nexus, which we use for address searches, and we're going to, I've already canceled it. So, so I'm putting 200 there instead of the 1,000. It's the line 3243 UB collection expense. So, instead of the 1,000, she put it higher because she noticed that things were going up quite a lot this year, and that's why we've canceled them. It used to be 15 to $30 a month, depending upon how many searches we made, and they changed it to a flat 150. And it's just not worth it. We turn our things over. In non-COVID times, we turn our things over within three months to Wakefield and they can do the searches, so. That's, that's the only thing I changed, otherwise, I think she pretty much stuck with, stuck with what was already there.
On the fuel and oil, was that supposed to be 600 instead of 60?
It's, yes. It should be 600. Well, no, it won't be very much. I'm not really sure. That looks like an error, though. I think that the only thing we do is fill that pickup up and they go, they read two days every month. So, 24 times they read, but they read everything in the whole city. So, I don't know how much fuel.
Yeah, but certainly more than 60. Yeah, probably more close to 500, it looks like.
Yeah, because year-to-date, it's at 8557.
And that's March.
Yeah.
Right.
I ran all these in March, so they don't have the current stuff. But yes, it looks like it was 418, so 600 wouldn't be bad considering higher fuel, because 418 was a full year, so.
Okay.
Yeah, sounds good, good catch.
Jeannie, what about the property and casualty, casualty insurance?
Okay, those are blank on all of them, because I do them after we decide for sure, under the self-insurance account, how much we're going to use to allocate. So, they're going to be, you know, just like all the salaries, all the way down to unemployment insurance is, is blank. Those are ones where we haven't figured it out yet.
Okay, sounds good.
Anything else?
Thanks, Jeannie. I think next on your list is Doug Hoffman with Inventory Store.
I'm going to try to beat Steve. One change, overtime expense, just because, added some in there. It was kind of supposed to be some in there last year, but didn't get put in there. Everything else is the same as last year. Any questions?
You still a one-man shop?
One-man shop right now, yes, still.
Good job.
No questions?
Yeah, no surprises, thanks.
Thanks, Doug.
All right, I think we can jump to Brent now.
How much are you spending, Brent?
Millions.
Just not in this fund.
So, yeah, I guess, part of me should apologize to our newer council people, having not been through our budget process. Typically, what you are seeing tonight is, this is the budget that the superintendent or the manager of the department has direct oversight of. So, these are the expenditures that they're in control of. Everything else that you see that's blank are the kind of the expenditures that they really don't have control over, the salaries, insurance, the allocations between the departments. And so, we start meeting in June to start going through departmental, you know, expenditures. And then, as we get closer to the budget getting finalized, Jeannie, Susan will sit down and start putting in all of the other numbers that fulfill then the complete budget. So, what you guys are seeing tonight is in no way a complete budget, but it is the parts of it that each manager is in control of and feels that they need moving forward. So, just as a kind of a cap of what's going on there, so. What you have in front of you with me is the utility director budget, and even though I do spend a lot of other departments' budgets, mine is a rather small budget. I did, like Steve, we dropped the data processing out. It's a budget line item that we used to have some expenditures out of years ago and we don't any longer, so we took that out. I did increase my miscellaneous line item. That's how we pay for the utility barbecue. Still not knowing if we're going to have one this year or not, but things have gotten a little more expensive and wanted to have a little more money in there for the utility barbecue next year. And then, the only other increase that I had in this budget was I wanted to jump my meeting expenses up now that I'm traveling for the NPGA Board of Directors to Nebraska. And then, I have a couple of newer committee obligations out there, too. I'll have some more expenses there. So, those were the, the adjustments that I had to my budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that and the process in general, so. But like I said, I do apologize for not hitting on that a little sooner.
No questions for me?
We have a question, Brent, that's not as much with your budget. Well, I guess I don't see anything in that budget. You know, we've talked about since we got fiber, our progress towards becoming a smart city. And so, I wondered if we were doing anything, since I don't see anything in the budget that's towards the end and everything, if we're doing anything to be moving in that direction.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't put anything in. Last year, we had the, the smart metering that we wanted to get in there. When we went through Doug's budget on the electric side of things, that's where those, those expenditures come from. His, his rebuilds kind of took a little bit of a precedent and his condition of the substations is kind of driving the boat on that side of things for at least another year. We definitely want to put the smart metering, that's kind of the next big step that we want to take as a community. And so, that money, those conversations have been had, but we kind of prioritized a little bit different for 2021, just to be honest with you, Kevin. So, we will do everything we can to keep those ideas moving forward. We still continue to work with ALO on some of their, you know, smart city initiatives. But right now, ALO, I think, is, they're doing a lot of expansion, so our conversations with them are, you know, a little bit, you know, they're smaller than they used to be, but we'll keep moving forward on that as much as we can, so.
Okay, that sounds good. Yeah, because I do think that it just gives us an opportunity to, number one, take advantage of having the fiber in the ground, but number two, to hopefully be more... hopefully be just one little extra piece of attraction to new businesses and/or citizens, so I urge you to, and everybody to, keep that in the forefront as far as the thought process.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions for Brent?
None from me, Your Honor.
Very good.
Thanks, Brent.
Thanks, Brent. I think we'll invite Nelson out of the back here, and he can kind of go over his budget.
My toes.
The man from the back room.
That's right.
You're pushing my toes.
That's right.
Hi, Nelson.
Hi. Okay, so there have been some changes in my budget, of course, client access licenses, which is our software, Office 365, Azure Active Directory P1, that's how we do our two-factor authentication with our devices here in the city, that is lumped into the client access licenses now. We're also doing yet another round of computer upgrades like we do every other year, so we'll be doing that. Our backs aren't up against the wall this, this year. Windows 7 is pretty much gone from our network, we beat the deadline last year, so we'll probably end up getting new monitors with the new PCs that we get this year, so. Other than that, any questions?
How many FTE are in your department? How many FTE are in your department?
Uh, three. There's myself, Pat Fitz, and Carlos Garcia.
Cool, thanks.
I have a great team. They're phenomenal. Carlos doesn't mess around, Pat gets it done, so it's, I mean, he'll get you anything you need, as far as maps are concerned, anytime you want.
Cool.
After COVID, I think your budget should be whatever.
Whatever.
Whatever you want, Nelson.
Yeah, we, we rolled with the punches this year on that, and I've been really happy with how everything's turned out. I mean, it hasn't been perfect, but we've done the best we could.
Yeah, you guys have been great, so thanks.
Kept us rolling, so, yeah.
Yes, great job.
For sure.
It's great to hear, thank you.
Even with reminders.
Okay, well, I will go back in one second.
All right, thanks, Nelson. We'll move on to the gas department. Tony, come on up.
Mayor, Council, thank you for having me. One change, maintenance of system, I increased it by $10,000, just because the cost of things are going up. That's the only change. Happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
You're too fast, hold on, which line?
3220.
The maintenance of system went from 30 to 40.
Got it, okay. And this is what you need to get the job done?
Yep.
Okay.
Hey, thank you.
You bet.
Thanks, Tony, appreciate it.
Way to dreasonize it.
All right, last but not least, is the sanitation fund. Bobby's in the back, so we'll invite him up.
Good evening.
Fine.
The only thing I have an increase on is my maintenance of equipment of $10,000 extra.
Let's say your overtime went down by 1,000.
Yeah, we, we've found that we didn't quite need that much, so we just cut it back a little bit.
Right.
We did add an employee into that department to help with heavy trash and that type of thing, so that's helped a bunch with that, too. It's been hard filling that position. We've had people in and out of it, and so we spent a lot of time training an employee, and then just about the time they're ready to go out on their own, they decide they don't want to do the job anymore, or get a different job, or whatever. So we've not really been able to utilize that position like we hoped, but I think we found a good one, finally.
And you're looking to get a new truck in 2021?
Still training right now, but we're getting there.
And a new truck as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, that's great news that you're fully staffed, and send the new hire our regards.
I'll do that.
Yeah.
I've sort of been the city trash lady in the last few months, people keep calling me about the dumpsters and all that stuff. And so I've, I've kind of been noticing, a lot of them look really beat up, do you need new?
We've got a lot to change out, we really do.
So do you repair all those, or do you, can you buy new ones? Do you have enough money for that?
Yeah, we got a lot of new containers out there to be changed now, we just need to get the time to do it. As soon as we get everybody trained, we can focus on these other things, and we can change them out pretty quick.
That's good.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll be focusing on that.
I've kept Brent busy with all my complaints.
You can take his number off your cell phone now.
I don't know.
Mr. Evans, what do you use your miscellaneous line for?
Miscellaneous line, it's basically used for stuff we order, like through office supplies, coffee, creamer, gloves, stuff like that. That's what we use it for.
Thanks.
Don't you have an office supply expense line item, or?
Yeah, and of course, we use paper and stuff like that, that goes directly to office supplies, but the miscellaneous stuff, we don't look at gloves and things like that as office equipment, so that's what I use it for.
Alley approaches, you're doing the concreting in the alley approaches on the alleys in town, or just on Riverview?
No, it's, it's my portion of, all the other departments chip in to do this, so my portion of it's 20,000, it's to do the approaches into various alleys in the city.
Yeah, we split that between departments, so that we can get many of those done each year, sewer department, Bobby's department, street department, so they each kick in money, and we do several approaches each year.
Yeah.
Bobby, the kid that you got over my, in my neighborhood, give him some kudos, some trash came out of the truck, and for the first time ever, I actually saw somebody get out and pick that up, and I, he's a good kid, he really is.
Yeah.
I like him a lot.
Nick's a good kid.
Yep.
I'll, I'll pass that along to him. Yeah.
All right, any other questions for Bob?
Nope. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. I just appreciate all the effort that went into this first round of budgets, so we've got a great team, as I said, and it's nice to start going through this process. And as Brent said, there are many line items that are empty yet, but we've got a lot to talk about still with employee salaries, if we're gonna do anything next year as far as any increases and things like that, that's why a lot of these aren't populated at the moment, but we'll be talking about that soon, so.
Cool.
Thank you all.
All right. Next on our agenda is consent agenda. Mr. Brandon?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight's consent agenda includes items A, B, and C, which are approval of the minutes of the June 11th City Council Special Meeting, the June 16th City Council Regular Meeting, and the July 1st City Council Special Meeting respectively. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine business by the council, and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
I would entertain a resolution accepting the consent agenda as presented.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
I have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Brian Erdy Alice, vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Public comment or audience participation, this is for items not on the agenda for this evening. Yep.
Let's see, I'm Jack Harb, for the Four Hundred Times. We got someone who called in requesting we do a story about the use of illegal fireworks, and I kind of wanted to just check in with the council and with Chief Crone about if there's anything more that can be done about that. I know it's probably super hard to enforce. I'd also like to ask the board some of their, their thought processes, thought process on the selection of Mr. Glamire.
Great, should we start with fireworks and then talk about Steve? Let's start with the, the law boss down there.
Are you talking about specifically what the ordinance is on the fireworks, or?
She was kind of upset with the noise, and I know the current firefighters and orders aren't even allowed.
Yeah. The city ordinance is essentially mimics what the state statute is, simplest way of putting anything that leaves the grounds or explodes is considered illegal. And I think anybody in here that spent any time with any, you know, within any municipality could tell, this year was probably the most, I guess the most fireworks I've ever seen outside of public displays, you know, type of thing. Chasing around with three people in a town of almost 12,000 people and actually finding where they're coming from, it's a lost cause, it's not gonna happen. I know it went on Friday night, Saturday night, and to a lesser degree, Sunday night as well. Again, I don't know how many total call for services we had, but is it anomaly? I would think so, but at the same time, we get the same complaints every single year. We respond to them as people call in, and it's not that we necessarily contact people or even find who was doing it. It's, again, it's a kind of a hit and miss thing, so I think probably the key thing is, if people have the complaint, they need to call in. The officers hear it as well, they, they hear it, they see it, but to have a frame of references, yeah, it's up in the air, I hear something, but I can't exactly tell where it's at, so. Outside of that, again, I didn't, don't have the exact numbers as to how many responded to, but it was definitely a lot more than, than normal.
It's an every-year occurrence. You know, this year, with the state of the, where our nation is, it was more than I've ever seen. I was up off of Road V, and looking down over town and all across, Brush had the same exact issues, Wiggins had them, Sterling, it was two people up, and they're gonna raise some ruckus when they can, you know, it was a one time, but it, at times, it does go a little bit longer, I mean, the fourth is the fourth, but, you know, July 20th to, or June 20th to the fourth, probably a little excessive, but as far as our police department, as Jared stated, by the time they get a call, get over there, it's really hard, people are gone, they shut them down, and they're back in the house or in the backyard, it's very hard to, to enforce it. Like he said, our statutes pretty much mimic what the state statute is, and so do the best that they can, and it is a difficult time. Hopefully, it'll start being curtailed down, and everybody's popped all their firecrackers and fireworks, and it'll start curtailing down. I know a big issue is people's four-legged friends are kind of take the brunt of it, so I know that's, that's a big, big issue for a lot of people, but. As far as our selection of Mr. Glamire, what's there to say? We went through, we had in excess from the, the headhunter, or the recruitment firm that we hired, we received 37, in excess of 30 some odd applicants. They broke them down into tiers of the A group, which was, met all the requirements, had the degrees, the time on, then there was another section that, you know, they had some questions with, and then they had a third that didn't really meet the requirements, but, you know, you could look at them, and then there was a group that didn't meet them at all. Council met together and went through a review with the city attorney and the recruitment firm to go over and make a selection of who we wanted to select as the finalists, and when we sat down collectively, it came up that we had two of them that would be potential candidates, Mr. Glamire being one of them, and another, Matthew Coors from Elizabeth, Colorado, were the two finalists. We scheduled and sit-down interview and conversation with Mr. Glamire first, and his interview went phenomenal, and it just seemed to fit what our needs were here as a collective group. He can move his files and offices down the hall, jump right back into the budget process that we have, him and his wife Kim are already located in the community. There was a huge round of support from the community, as well as a lot of the city employees, and as I stated, his, his interview was, was very well, I mean, it went really well, and we decided it was time just to make that decision and that move. We came to an agreement, and I wouldn't change it. I think Steve is gonna do a very phenomenal job for the city. I think the employees, for the most part, are very pleased with him. You'll find that he'll be out in the community and very accessible, honest, a lot of integrity, and as time goes on, you'll see how, what a good choice I think we made as, as a council, so.
I think Clint Anderson, who's not here tonight, had one of the best kind of statements that Steve's been interviewing for this job for a couple of years. So, yeah, just high-quality completion of projects, willing to collaborate with other government entities, and we already know he's really passionate about local government, and I'm trying to think any other big, yeah, as far as objectively, like, since he was already in that top tier, we're really thrilled to interview him, and then we reached consensus very easily as a council about the appointment.
So, can I answer your question?
I just would like to add that, over the years, he's been one of the most outstanding city engineers that we've had, that really got along with the, the public and, and the staff, so that, that already had it going for him. So, his interview was excellent, and I love the continuity and the stability it offers at this time, and I think it was an excellent choice. Heard a lot from the public and the employees, so I'm, I'm just thrilled that he wants to be here, and I'm really looking forward to working with him.
I'd have to agree with the rest of them. The only comment I had is if we pick Steve, where are we gonna get another Steve? So he has some shoes to fill.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, it was very easy, very, very easy to do this, so.
I was not at the final interview, but I did get a lot of phone calls for Steve, wanting to see Steve in there, and I worked with Steve in planning zone before I was on city council, and he did a great job coming in there, and I think he'll do a great job coming in as city manager as well.
Kevin?
Yeah, I figure anybody that has a background as a big farmer had to be okay with me. Anyway, you know, we had experience with Steve as far as how he had done with public works, and his presentations were always spot on, and he was always right on top of everything. Watching him maneuver through this planning up to construction of the field house and everything also impressed me with him, and so. also impressed me with him. And so we had that aspect. We had his experience. He's been, uh, the, uh, city manager for Tim or, uh, for two episodes. So he already had experience there. He's always been in city government. But then when we got to his interview, the thing that impressed me was he is really dedicated towards public service, towards serving the citizens of this community. He's already decided, he and his wife have already decided to make for more in their home. And he also had good plans and everything as far as how to deal with, uh, personnel, how to transition into the job and everything. So I must admit in all the interviews I've been through in my long career and everything, uh, I was most impressed with his.
Did you get enough pull quotes?
There you go.
Yeah. Big farmer was the best.
Okay. Anybody else for audience participation? Chris, you've been just sitting there all night. You good?
She's thinking.
All right. Reports by officials and staff.
Well, maybe a couple of things, Your Honor. Uh, first of all, y'all embarrassed me, but I appreciate it and, uh, I look forward to jumping in with both feet. Um, to that end, one of the issues and concerns is what, what do we do in my position? So I want to just immediately appoint Brent Nation as interim, uh, public works director so that we can keep some continuity of things going. We talked about that and, uh, he, he is ready and willing, or maybe at least willing. So.
Thanks, Brent.
But I appreciate Brent's, uh, willingness to do that. He, he's done it before and there, and there's no doubt he can, he can carry that ball. He and I'll tag team that a little. I'll help him with some things that I've got in the pipeline and, and, uh, and these types of things. But no doubt we're in good hands until we figure out what direction we're headed. I haven't made any real decisions yet, but want to get a little bit of time to think about it and, and do it right. I, I don't want to rush into it, but move with, uh, you know, cautious expediency to get that position taken care of. So we'll get working on that. Um, I'll just give a quick, uh, fieldhouse update as well. We kind of mentioned that a little. Uh, they'll be, uh, placing concrete in some of the footers tomorrow. Uh, the concrete guys are in town. The, all of the footers have been excavated at this point. So they're just forming those up, setting steel today. Um, we'll get an inspection early tomorrow and then they'll, uh, place some of that concrete. They'll be working on footers for a week or so to get those all poured. There's a lot of them in there. Um, and then we'll do some utility work underneath where the slab will go and then we'll be pouring the slab. So a lot of progress going on out there. I invite you all again, anytime you want to go out, let me know. Be happy to take you on a quick tour. Not a lot to see out there at the moment, but it is fun to start to see things coming out of the ground. So. I'll look to the group. Are there other things Brent's saying? Yeah, you know, you can't back out of the interim public work. Sorry, that's already done.
Um, yeah, I've got a couple of things tonight. Um, we, uh, just so council is aware, we've been working now for, this is the, coming up on the conclusion of our fifth year of our backflow program within the city limits. And during the midst of all of the COVID going on, we had two, um, backflow devices that were not handled correctly. And most of it was just timing issues. We happened to get audited by the state during this time and so we fessed up and just said we missed the deadline on it. And, um, they immediately granted us all of the extensions that we needed to make it right. But it, it, um, does require us to notify our drinking water customers that we've had what they refer to as a tier-two violation of our drinking water. Something that Al and Eric take very seriously. Um, we will be mailing those out to all of our water customers the next couple of weeks. So everybody will get an individual letter. It won't come out with your utility bill. It'll be an individual letter. It'll describe what happened, how it was remedied, and what will be taking place moving forward. So, um, just to let you guys know that that is coming. Tonight, driving into the council meeting, we had a, um, grass fire started by lightning that got loose out by the water treatment plant. Um, the pictures that Al's been sending me while I've been sitting in the back, it looks like it burned completely around our water tanks.
Oh, my.
Um, but we, we maintain that ground, keep it shortcut so it can't burn up to the tanks. Um, so I think the tanks are probably okay. Uh, it may cause some smoky issues because that smoke is just hanging out there at the reservoir right now as they're putting out the fire. And so I'll probably have more update on that later, but I think we may have dodged a bullet with that one. And so, um, a little bit of good news with a little bit of scary news all at once. And then I was just going to throw it out there. He's one of the most humble, you know, employees that I have work for me and he hates to be embarrassed when he's at a public meeting. But the, uh, gas department has once again received another safety award. They don't like these things brought public, but I just couldn't bypass the chance tonight to thank Tony for everything that his department does. And once again, I don't know how many years in a row, they've now received the safety award for keeping their, their guys safe and our system safe. So I appreciate that work, Tony.
Great.
Way to go, Tony.
I'm in trouble now, but. That was all I had and I'm definitely more than happy to help Steve with the public works. I did help with public works when Brad Curtis left before. And so I've done that in an interim role once before too. So I'll, I'll help him get that going while, while he decides how he wants to fill that position full-time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brent. Anybody else? Not seeing any head nods, so I think, uh, that's it for us.
Good job, Tony.
I've got a couple things, Steve.
Oh, sure.
Um, I got a call actually today, um, a couple hours before the meeting from a resident in Lynn and Kevin's ward. They just expressed concern that the, well, they were excited that the rec departments pushed out some programming, um, but they're concerned that none of the outreach materials were in Spanish. So I just wanted to make sure Kevin and Lynn were aware of it and bring it up to Steve's attention that I got that call today. So, um, yeah.
Okay.
So, um, Steve's done a really good job of adapting, um, some recreation programming this summer because a lot of the larger group events needed to be adapted or changed. So, um, so they've pushed it out in social media channels and they kind of have a, a list serve for families who have already registered for past rec events, but they were just hoping it could be translated into Spanish. So, yeah, language equity is a really important thing for our, our community. So, um, I want to bring that up. And one thing that's kind of related, I just wanted to follow up about the marketing position, if that's been filled yet? Susan, any updates about? And if we have like a hiring freeze right now and that's why it's not filled or?
That is.
Yeah, that's correct. We would have currently still under, you know, waiting on revenues again for at least one more month to see how the revenues are looking. And then we're going to talk about that amongst ourselves and figure out how we want to move forward with the positions we've not yet filled. We have several of those on the, on the potential books. So we're just waiting to get through those, those revenue projections for at least one more month. We have a lot of projects we've suspended as well. So I think once we get past that, then we can talk about that some more, but.
And I think filling that position is going to be a help for, um, departments like Community Works and Gulf Course, all of those different departments that do lots of interfacing with the public. So. And my last thing is about, um, and I don't know if this is a Sarah question or a Brent question, but, um, what will our city, um, city's participation look in applying with the county for the protect our neighbor status? Is that something that we're kind of in that same group that you've been doing other economic development work with or, um? Yeah, I've just been doing a lot of work with my work-work hat with other counties in the region, but I haven't heard about if Morgan County is applying for protect our neighbor status.
What is it?
Yeah, what is that? So it'll be a quick update because I don't think at this point we've had that conversation with the county commissioners. We were having meetings in terms of the variance that they wanted to apply for, uh, which then they took back seeing as the new regulations came out that met a lot of those requests through the variance. But if we do have another meeting as, uh, county and city officials, uh, I'll certainly ask them.
Cool. So for those of you who aren't aware, um, there's kind of three different phases of, um, protection based on your active cases rates, your ability to test, your ability to have hospital capacity, how many beds are available. Um, so to protect our neighbors is kind of, um, the most lenient as far as openness. Um, you can have events up to 500 people, things like that. So right now we're, um, and the state does have funding available for the planning process, um, but it is a county-by-county application. So.
Yeah, I think give me an opportunity to get my arms around that a little because I don't know anything about it. And so I think, um, it's just one of the many things I need to get familiar with and then figure out if that's a step we want to take and move forward with and so.
And we would love to have more city of Fort Morgan participation on our Board of Health, um, Zoom meetings. We'd love to have more press there as well. Um, we've had, we have them a lot more frequently now and we prepared a lot of additional data to share that's really related to the protect our neighbor status. So. Yeah, I was just curious if any, if there are any breadcrumbs, um, with Morgan County.
Sure.
And how, um, we're playing a role.
Very good. Thank you.
Oh, and Steve?
Yeah.
We need you to be well-dressed for your new job.
Oh.
So.
My goodness.
Go for it.
Open this now?
Yeah.
Is this?
Because we need Kevin to be able to see.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Oh, goodness. Oh, my gosh. This is, you'll, you'll never, this is a Star Wars tie. You'll never believe it. This is. Thank you all very much. Uh, you know, I collect ties and I have many, many ties. Uh, and thanks to Kevin for several more Christmas ties in my collection. But this is the first, uh, Star Wars tie I've ever had and I, I love it. I will wear it proudly.
All right.
I will. Thank you all very much.
And I promise I'm done. No more questions tonight.
Anything else, Allison?
I'm going nightmare.
Okay. Bids, meetings, and announcements. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city has no requests for bids out at the current time. Uh, under meetings, the planning commission is scheduled to meet on the 13th at 4:30 PM here at City Hall. And the next city council regular meeting will be July 21st at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. Couple of quick announcements. Um, Quail Dunes is going to offer a free day of golf for first responders, uh, this Saturday afternoon from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. That would include police, fire, ambulance, and healthcare personnel as well as active and retired military personnel. Just have to call the golf course, make a tee time, and, uh, friends and family playing with you, will get a free cart with the payment of a green fee. The planning and zoning and building departments at the south end of the city complex will be closed next Monday, July 13th, all day long for moving over to their new quarters in the old senior center. So that building will, um, those services will not be available that day, inspections, permits, that type of thing. Uh, they will reopen for normal hours in the new location on Tuesday, July 14th. And, uh, as you may have seen, strictly for streets, um, second phase of the summer got underway this week and will be going on for probably most of July. Um, all the details on all this information is, uh, on the city's website.
Okay. Thank you. And in all seriousness, Allison, thanks for your updates on a lot of this. Appreciate it.
I know at the very beginning, we had a lot more when all of the new public health orders were being pushed out. It's been a little bit smoother lately, but, um, I don't know how this is, yeah. Jeff, I don't know if this is you a question, but from my work email, can I push out? Like as we get new updates from the health department, can I just send it directly to this group or?
Absolutely. The danger is the reply all.
Okay.
As long as nobody hits reply all, if it's going one direction, you're fine.
Okay. Cool. Cause I'll have a really fresh bi-weekly data report tomorrow morning that I can push out to you guys that's, um, yeah.
Blew my glass.
So anyway, it's really, really good stuff. So.
Thanks. Nothing else come before council. This meeting is adjourned.